Approve the agenda in a second.
Oh, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. We have a work session on the travel policy. It's titled "Travel Policy Discussion." This came at the request of Councilman Schmidt, and he, at the very last minute this afternoon, had a medical situation come up that he unfortunately can't be here. But it was kind of too late to cancel, and I understand, Mr. Lynn, that he provided you with his questions, or you have the questions or something?
He did a couple.
Okay, so if you want to start us with what his questions are, he did not respond to my request as to what his questions were, so I don't have a clue what he wants to talk about. So, go ahead.
I never got any questions either, so I didn't really know what I was going to present today. So if some of you have questions, maybe you can ask them.
The couple questions that he had, that he had asked, people ask him, were, and he's kind of going back to this Paris trip, if it's an apartment head, who approves the travel request? You know how the apartment head approves the travel request for employee? If it's a department head, who approves the travel request? That comes to you.
Well, they sign it as the department head. That's our process. And then they all go to the Finance Committee and then the council. So Finance Committee and the council are who ultimately approve them.
Okay, but they submit it under the name of the department head. If he's traveling, then...
Correct, and they all come through my office for review, and Mayor and I review them that way.
And then Suzie kind of explained to me, and the question again was asked to Steve, if somebody goes out and buys a ticket, not on the city credit card, on their own credit card, does that understand it? So in other words, no city money has been committed yet. So if it came to us and we said, "No, you can't do that," they're out that money?
Well, I don't know what Suzie told you, but I can tell you what I do. The Finance Department, we don't approve paying things until we have an approved travel request. So, and this should not just apply to travel expense, it would be any expense. If a department head chooses not to follow city policy and get it approved through proper channels, and they go order something, or they purchase a ticket on their own, if it's not approved by council, I don't pay anybody, so they would not be.
And that was the question is, because it seemed like some of the stuff were kind of approving in arrears, we thought, and now we understand that's not the case. And Suzie tried to explain to me, if another entity pays for, like this Paris trip, they're going to pay for the airfare, that's the Friends, that's just money outside the, you know, the city money.
Correct.
So we don't even look at that, we don't approve it, we don't see it, we don't...
Not necessarily. I do ask departments to route those even no-cost travel requests to the city. If city employees are traveling, they are requested to file a request with me so that we know we have an employee traveling. Generally, it means they're taking a city vehicle. So we've wanted to know for insurance purposes if we have a vehicle going to Des Moines, or whatever. So those would come through my office, but if there is zero travel, zero cost in terms of direct cash outlay, I would evaluate, I don't want to say evaluate them. I look at them and forward them to Mayor for signature.
For instance, I was noting, noticed today that Cheryl is traveling, and she's paying a bunch of her own way. We're going to approve that tonight.
Correct, that, yeah, that one for the ancilla.
So, but I noticed on her travel request, she has, you know, 2,500 bucks, total amount. But the request is only for like 700 bucks.
Correct.
Is that what you're talking about, how you would typically?
Yes, in general. We have some, travel requests under $100 aren't required to come to the Finance Committee and the council either. So we have lots of people that might travel to Des Moines, or Cedar Rapids, or somewhere, for various reasons. Some of that would be to go to a meeting, some of it would be to go to educational travel, and so we evaluate those according to the policy in the Finance Department, and they're forwarded to Mayor for his review and approval, because it just, for $100, it really probably doesn't make sense to take up your time. But, so the one for Cheryl doesn't quite fit that, because she's still asking the city to pay $700.
Sure.
But let's say the Paris, let's just not even talk about Paris. Let's just say a department head was going to travel to New York City, and they have a Friends organization that was going to pay for all of it except $50. We would expect that department to turn in a request to me for the 50, explain that another entity is covering the remainder. It would not come to the Finance Committee or the council. I would, I would go through my process with it and forward it to the mayor for his signature and approval before the person goes. We also do them for zero cost. So if they decided that another entity was going to pay all their travel, for whatever reason, a Friends organization or whatever, there should be a travel request that goes through the Finance Department and the mayor's office, but that would be all.
And then when, when that's done, and they travel, then the employee submits a employee expense record, and that's the final audit of the true expenses of that?
Only if they have expenses being paid by the city. We, I don't ask for that if they're not charging the city anything, yeah.
Right.
But if they do...
At the end, there's a record of the actual expenses with some kind of supporting documents?
Yep, yes, that's correct.
Okay. I think that's what...
Mr. Welker?
Just my comment, as I read through this today, it's really a common sense policy, it really is. I understand we have to have guidelines to follow. Tom's first question was regards to the $100. If it's under $100, it's approved by the mayor. Anything over $100 goes through Finance and approval by the council. So that's his answer to that. But, yeah, I have any problem with this at all. It seemed like it, again, it was a common sense policy.
We drafted this, I drafted this policy in about 2002. It was updated tremendously at that time, based on some suggestions we had from the Auditor State's Office, and some of you may remember there were some travel things that occurred before I actually started here that we tried to incorporate in here. So the policy was designed to be flexible and allow staff judgment and management judgment to travel, but it also puts guidelines about what taxpayers are expected to fund. So we did attempt to address all those questions. It has worked pretty well for the 14 years that I've been here. We've had a few tweaks. For example, the recent one was, last winter, when we had an employee that was going to go to a long-term training. In the past, long-term trainings were typically funded very inexpensively by the sponsoring organization, and in this, in that case, it wasn't. So we felt an amendment needed to be done to create a policy that worked better for that case. But we've had no audit issues with the travel policy since we've adopted it and implemented it, and I don't think we've had a travel finding from the auditors in that period of time. So, and believe me, they do audit, they do review travel expenses closely in every audit. So I think I'm very comfortable that if anybody came in and examined our travel expenses, they, they meet under state law, they meet under city policy. I tend to look at expense reimbursements personally when I do my weekend review of the bill payments, so I think they're scrutinized very closely, and we try to, very hard to comply with all our policies.
Mr. Hart?
Sure, I just have a question. With this particular policy, and let's just say, international travel, are there some distinctions that need to be made in the type of per diem and things that we would have for an international, for international travel? Because I don't necessarily know if I've seen it reflected in here, but this may be a situation where we want to expand a little bit more, do more business around the world. But is that reflected in here?
Our policy does not address international travel directly, either with a limit, or a prohibition, or encouragement. So we, and I would be reluctant, I think, to have you say, for example, ban international travel and not allow it at all, because I just don't know... We do work with some vendors that are actually in Canada, and I don't want to get us in a position where if somebody needs to go pick up, I'm thinking of the police tack vehicle. We did not get it in Canada, but it came from Northeast. You know, if, if for some reason, we were working with a vendor in Canada and needed to go there, I wouldn't want to have a policy that says you can't.
No, I'm not talking about banning.
No, I know. I don't know what to tell you about cost. I mean, you know...
Michelle?
We haven't had an issue with it, I guess, so our limits seem to have addressed what little international travel has been done, which is very little. I know that the request you have before you, what they've asked for meets our requirements. So I don't, I think it's enough. But there may be a case where they need higher limits or something that hasn't been requested yet.
Yeah, I guess my thinking is, hopefully, one day we'll become more global. We'll move in that direction where a mayor may make a trip to somewhere and set up something, or we may try to attract other companies. So there may be a situation where we have to go overseas in that manner. So I just, I was just asking, really as a preface to maybe in the future, if we take a look at maybe what other companies, other cities do, and add some language in there about it, because, I mean, pretty much forward, but you never know.
We, I did, the travel policy that you have is a compilation of some from some other large cities that I looked at when I drafted this. And I don't recall seeing any convert, any language, specific language about international travel. But if there are specific things that you would like to see or think we shouldn't see, we can always consider that and add something.
Michelle, isn't there a part in, in what I read there that deals, that would deal with this by allowing a person in exceptional situations to get special requests? Isn't there a part of this policy that deals with that?
Yes, yes.
That would cover that?
And that's probably, we try to stick pretty close to the guidelines, so, for example, and I, I just don't know of an instance of hand, but let's, let's just say for some reason hotel rooms are twice as expensive wherever you're going as what our limit. I mean, we really don't have a limit. It just says a reasonable cost. Now, if you told me the only place you could stay cost $1,000 a night, you would have to show me why that's reasonable. You would have to show me that you looked at every hotel in that community, and they're all $1,000 after the exchange. I mean, foreign stuff is a pain for the Finance Department, because we have to deal with all the currency exchange, so be okay with us if we didn't do that. But I'm not sure that's in the city's best interest to do it that way. So yes, I do, I'm trying, I'm just trying to think what things would be in here that wouldn't be addressed. There may be some types of expenses that we don't typically incur that we might have to talk about. I think this, if I remember correctly, there might even be a place that talks about clothing, cleaning, you know, things like that if you were gone for an extended time that perhaps you'd have to deal with. We generally do not provide those kinds of things. It would be an exception type of situation.
David, do you have any questions? Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor, one more. Our insurance, health insurance, cover our employees when they're out of the country?
Yes.
It does?
Michelle, one of the things that, first of all, I guess I was wondering why this got brought up, but secondly, it sounds like there was a reason for bringing it up. But I am wondering, has there been any or innuendo or insinuation that, that the trip to Paris was done inappropriately, or improperly, or something? I mean, is that what the insinuation is here?
I, and I, the agenda probably really wasn't worded correctly, because it says it was submitted by me to have the work session, and I really was just sending the attachments. The work session was requested by Councilman Schmidt, and I, he didn't, he didn't respond to the mayor, so I don't really know why he wanted it. I am making an assumption that we were questioned at council by a couple citizens, and I know there was one citizen that sent some emails that was just opposed to culture and arts being able to travel. So I'm assuming he was trying to address those concerns about the Paris trip, yes.
But a trip like this would go through Suzie and/or you, or both of you, or, or in the department head?
It's reviewed, yes, it's approved. So, so if somebody wants to travel, there's a form we fill out. I mean, any of you who've seen at least the Finance Agenda, I don't think they get attached to the Council Agenda anymore. But if they want to travel somewhere, they turn in a form, it gets routed through me, I check the budget, I check they're not asking for three times what our policy would generally allow. And then it would go, depending on the amount, it would either go directly to the mayor's office if it's less than $100, or it would be placed on the Finance Committee Agenda and then the Council Agenda for approval. So we've tried to give the elected officials lots of information anytime anybody travels, whether it's to Des Moines, or Haiti, or Paris. And in this case, it was approved by the Finance Committee and the council, but I know there were a couple citizens who questioned it, and I hope we've addressed all those questions at this point.
And I, I mean, I'm not in any way taken away from the fact that everybody has a right to get up and complain, or ask questions, or to criticize, or to compliment, but in your review, or Suzie's review, or anybody's review, has there been anything that has been seen as inappropriate, or improper, in their request and the granting of the okay to go to Paris?
The particular Paris trip? I did not see an issue technically with the travel request. It was foreign travel, it was to Paris, so I suspected it would raise some eyebrows, which it did. But I think your department had, you know, he has a very good business reason for traveling to Paris to view that exhibit. We, Waterloo, and I'm sure you all know this already, I'm preaching to the choir, but we have one of the, I think, the largest publicly-owned Haitian art collection in the world since the disasters in Haiti a few years ago. And it does seem like we probably need to sell our, that's an advantage we have. You or I may not like Haitian art, but it's still some, it's an asset that we have that we probably need to do our best to show off, or have people come see it. And by going and seeing how someone else is working with that type of art and displaying it, seems like a valid business reason. And so, yes, it, yeah, I didn't question that. I, I understand now that perhaps some tickets were purchased prior to the travel request coming. I wasn't aware of that, unfortunately, until well after all this happened. But had they not, had that not been approved by Mayor and council, they, it wouldn't be reimbursed. So I don't think the city's risk was ever very great.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
One thing, I think, one of the misunderstandings with some of the public was the $1,700 for the tickets that then wasn't going to be paid by the grant money. And people were upset that maybe that money now would be just, you could use it for wine and beer in Paris.
Well, it's unfortunate that people in the public made an assumption like that without reading our policy.
I know, but that's why, I'm glad we're having this work session, so we can all understand.
And I'm actually glad you brought up alcohol, because the policy, I think if you read it, it specifically prohibits the purchase of alcohol with city funds, and it would not be reimbursed. And that's one of the things that my department gets stuck analyzing on every request that comes back. We go through the receipts, we expect detailed receipts on food, because we don't pay if you, if you have alcohol. So, yeah, there, and that's what I attempted to explain to a couple citizens, that it would be very difficult to take that $1,700 and blow it, and I'll use the word "blow," because I think that was the word they used with me, on something else, because the policy says what you can do. And, you know, unless you completely forgot that you had to take a train from England to Africa and back, I don't know what you would, I think it would have been very difficult to spend an extra $1,700 on something, because you couldn't just upgrade to a suite, you couldn't have a party and have alcohol and beverages, we wouldn't, we wouldn't reimburse for any of that. So it, I just felt it wasn't really relevant to the conversation. And, and yes, it's a misunderstanding by the public, and it's unfortunate they didn't specifically maybe ask those questions, or ask for the policy before making some comments publicly.
Further? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned. Thank you, Michelle.
Yes, Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Those in favor of the agenda, vote aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda.
Motion to approve new business, which is approval of the Waterloo Blackhawks retail store layout.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the Waterloo Blackhawks retail layout. Is there any discussion? Oh, second. Is there any discussion on that item?
I don't have any, having looked at it.
You have looked at it?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Lynn.
Yeah, Craig, are leasehold improvements owned by the city? By, by the lease, or however? In other words, when they make leasehold improvements, they're ours?
Correct. Craig Clark, building official, so yeah, the Blackhawks next year wouldn't be in Waterloo, whatever they install in Young Arena would be ours.
Right, thank you.
I don't think that's real likely, but, I mean, that's, yes. That's why something needs to go through building the grounds. I mean, we're more or less kind of approving that we're letting them put something in a city facility that we want, and will take, as our procession.
So Craig, while you're there, I just had a question about the drawing and signage on the facility. Is there a reference to party, what is it? Party Time, or Party Something? On the drawing?
You don't go to any hockey games, do you? Party Time Outfitters.
Is that what it is?
Party Town.
Party Town? Why is it called Party Town?
Maybe someone can answer that better. I'm not for sure, I guess.
Mike Falk is here. Mike is the manager, and he can explain it, but it's kind of folklore, and Young Arena during hockey games is Party Town.
That's correct. Mike Falk, water with Blackhawks. Our goal song is "Party Town" by Glenn Frey, somewhat kind of obscure. You probably won't find it in the mainstream music, but we've nicknamed Young Arena "Party Town" for Blackhawks games, and it's in the ice already there, and so it's commonly referred to. I don't think that's outlandish to say, as Party Town. And the current, the current store is called Party Town Outfitters as well.
So it all matches?
That's right.
Lovely. All right.
You need to go to a Blackhawks.
I've been to one, maybe two.
And I might say, Mr. Chairman, that it seemed like the design of the area they were proposing to build fit right in with the arena itself, so...
It does, doesn't it?
Yes.
All right, any further discussion?
No.
So those in favor of approval of that item, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign, that item passes.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thanks, Mike.
All right, it's time for Boards and Commissions Meeting. Madam Clerk, can you read the roll?
Yes, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Hart, Mr. Jones.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's been passed. I think we have one request for Janice Waterman Housing Authority reappointment. Questions about that?
Yes, sir. I'll second that.
Sure. Motion received and filed. Mayor Clark's recommendation for Janice Waterman reappointment has been made and seconded. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, it passes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.
Let's call the Human Resources Committee to order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welker?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Ms. Cole?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt? Mr. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, on the agenda. Any discussion or questions? Bring down all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Always the same sign. Motion passes. We have one request today, someone would like to take that?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve a request from Community Planning and Development Director for authorization to begin the civil service process for housing coordinator for the Waterloo Housing Authority and make an appointment.
We have a motion, a second, on this request. As you know... As you know, Ethel, Ethel's retirement. Julie Snyder moved up into her position, so we're simply replacing Julie's position. Is there any questions in regards to this?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Um, Michelle, what's the position pay? What's the amount of the...
Guessing it's not.
Or maybe Suzie.
Forty-eight thousand, yeah, or, or funds didn't get attached, apparently. I didn't bring mine with me. It, I think it's in the range of about forty-eight thousand, maybe a little more.
Okay.
Right around there. We have, we currently have three in that position, I believe. Well, including vacancy, there are three of that category.
When, when we do that, do we start the pay at what they, the last person got paid? Or is there a range, or?
Years ago, they pretty much, yeah.
Okay.
And what, what's the funding source to pay for that position?
This is all funded out of federal housing funds through, um, Housing Urban Development Agency. This is all the Section Eight and public housing also with Ridgeway Towers.
These funds can't be, can't be used for any other way except for housing coordinator related positions.
Correct. Well, they could use for different positions, but it would all have to be within Housing Authority. It'd have to be eligible activity for that purpose. So, yeah, it can't be used for the jungle fund or something else.
Okay, any other questions? Are we done? Madam Clerk, can you roll a call, please?
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We're adjourned. Thank you.
Any meaning to order? Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Yes, Ms. Cole.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Motion for the agenda as proposed and approval of the minutes of December 22nd.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Have any discussion?
No.
Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We have some new business. Versiden, Steve Carey and the Possible Second Instructor to Confine Space Rescue Albert City, Iowa, 1-1 through 1-7. Not to exceed $665. Investigators Nick Berry and Joe Zubach. Authorized Central Container Program in Clinton, Iowa, 1-20 to 1-22. Not to exceed $685. Cheryl Huddleston, Human Resources Manager, National Public Employer Labor Relations Association Annual Conference, Savannah, Georgia, 3-28 to 4-3, $700. And Will Muhammad, 748 Sherman Avenue, requesting refund in the amount of $20 because he's charged for the wrong-sized garbage container. And I-5 Dollar General Store, 4-6-9-8 at 820 West Fifth Street, is requesting a refund in the amount of $904.12 because they were overcharged because of a waterworks billing error.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Madam Chairperson, I'd be delighted to take the pre-ops.
Thank you.
And we've got airports in the amount of $8,157 for airport general liability insurance, um, for the year 2015. And building maintenance, $3,240 for Sunday cleaning at the police department. City clerk, $3,423 plus $27 shipping and handling for supplement number 18 to our city of Waterloo code. Police, $32,479 and 20 cents for annual software license. Enterprise agreement for Microsoft products, Office Professional, Windows Professional and Core License. Sanitation, $6,500 for hydraulic lift platform for F-250 trucks. Sanitation, not to exceed $2,300 for postage for annual recycling calendar mailing. Sewer, $1,500 for ARC GIS for desktop basic single-use license. Sewer, $6,077.57 plus $300 shipping and handling for 24-inch sludge mixer, propeller, seal cartridge and repair parts for digester number three, mixer number three. And sewer, $3,821 plus $113.19 shipping and handling for replacement parts for Hayward Gordon Pump, digester sludge, recirculation pump number one. This is amended to increase shipping.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Have any discussion?
Um, Ms. Chairperson.
Yes.
Oh, go ahead, Dave. Oh, um, Director Chalka, um, on the building maintenance thing, I looked that over and I was wondering, this is through Midwest Janitorial, and I was wondering, being as this is Sunday, or is that yours, Craig? I was just wondering, are, are these workers getting paid overtime for working on a Sunday?
Craig Clark, building official, I guess our contract with Midwest Janitorial doesn't specify if they get paid overtime. That would be, um, their company and how they handle overtime and that kind of stuff. All we're asking for is a price for them to provide a service on Sunday morning to clean the police department.
So ordinarily, Craig, they wouldn't be in there on Sunday?
Correct. Right now, they have no weekend cleaning. They do it at night, but it's Monday through Friday and, um, so we're adding Sunday morning to their cleaning schedule.
Could we ask of them that they pay their employees, um, a overtime rate for working on a Sunday?
I can ask that. I'm not sure if they do or not, to be honest with you. Um, it would be their, how they handle their employees, but, um, I can find that out.
Yeah, would you please let me know? Thanks.
Anything else? All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Sure. Take the budget line items to be amended, and that is to approve project budget amendments for the purchase of body cameras for police officers in the estimated amount of $10,000 funded with donations submitted by the police department.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I was curious, we got, did we get additional donations from folks? Because the first one, first donation was a thousand.
No, we have gotten... Hang on. What is it? Uh, and I'm gonna make note of that tonight, uh, at oral presentations, David, but we have gotten up, we're now up to $6,700 in donations for body cameras. Uh, they continue to come in. We had two come in today. So, uh, we are, we are really looking good on that and, uh, God bless the folks that are making those donations. Some of them are anonymous, that don't want their names mentioned, so, uh, but, yeah, they're coming in in checks, $2,000 at a time, $1,000 at a time, $500 at a time, and up to $6,700.
Very good.
All in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I move that we pay the bills this week, which are $2,631,950.27. Two, comma, six, three, one, comma, nine, five, zero, point, two, seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are adjourned.
Gentlemen, welcome to our regularly scheduled first meeting of the Waterloo City Council on, in 2015. It's incredible that we're saying that, but we are. Madam Clerk, would you start us by the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole, here. Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Lind?
Here.
Mr. Morrison?
Here.
Mr. Welker?
Here.
Mr. Hart?
Here.
Very good, thank you. If you'd all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection and prayer. Thank you very much. Our pledge tonight is going to be led by Mr. Noel Anderson, our Community Planning and Development Director, who's not here. If you would all join me, please, in pledging our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. I hate getting put on the spot like that. Damn, gummit.
Well, you did well.
Really? All right, great.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Hart, please.
I'd like to make a motion to receive, place on file and approve the consent agenda. Items 1A through, uh, 3B.
Go do the agenda first.
Oops, uh, you know what? This joker has...
That electronic stuff. I got you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as proposed and also the minutes of December 22nd's regular session.
Second. Council, do you have any questions regarding the agenda or the minutes? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we receive, place on file and approve the consent agenda. Items 1A through, um, 3A, also with the approval of the consent agenda, make a motion that... 3B? Man, this thing has me today.
3A, you're right.
3A, okay. Also, I move that we approve our bills payment, which we read by our finance chair.
The bills this week are $2,631,950.27. Two, comma, six, three, one, comma, nine, five, zero, point, two, seven.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart? Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, I, I missed that. We do have some appointments to recognize. Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. Let me get to them here. Where are they? Ms. Janice Waterman has been, uh, reappointed to the Housing Authority Board. So, we very much appreciate that for Ms. Waterman. She's served, I think, one term, and this will be her second term. And we appreciate it, Janice, she's not here tonight, I don't believe.
No.
But, what's that?
She is not.
She is not. Okay, thanks, Julie. But, uh, Janice has been reappointed, so, Janice, thank you for doing that. Those boards and commissions are important. And I believe that's all that I missed the first time around. Uh, Mr. Hart, uh, item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to receive and file proof of publication notice of public hearing for the request of Lindsay Choiina for the sale and conveyance of a city-owned vacant lot formerly addressed as 1135 Magnolia Parkway for $3,000 with the development agreement.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, do we have any written objections on file to item number two?
There were none.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number two, uh, selling some property to Ms. Choiina? A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we close the hearing.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions?
No. What is that development going to be?
Ms. Choiina? Just step in, give us your name and address, please.
Hey, uh, Lindsay Choiina, 1139 Magnolia Parkway.
Okay.
Uh, a couple weeks ago, for the grounds, um, committee meeting, um, there was a presentation. I have a 24-by-24 detached garage off of the alley on my current property. What I would like to do is cut, um, the street to have, uh, cut the curb, which I already got approval to do when I submitted the offer, and move my garage at additional 10 feet, so it'll be 24-by-34 on that current property. And have that off of the street and then, uh, fence in the, the entire property. It'll be some concrete work, bust-up, concrete move, uh, whether we move or disassemble and reassemble the current garage.
Okay.
Those are my, my plans.
All right, thank you.
Further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing sale and conveyance and authorize city attorney to prepare and deliver deed accordingly.
Second.
Madam Clerk, that's a roll call, please.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. There you are, Ms. Choiina, you're good to go. Items three and four, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Cole?
I move we adopt a resolution making financial institutions as depositories for the city of Waterloo and rescinding Resolution Number 2014-599 in its entirety. And item four, I move we adopt a resolution to approve a second amendment to the development agreement between City of Waterloo and Hotel President Partners LP and Iowa Limited Partnership to change the start date and end date to March 2015 and December 2015 respectively, and authorize Mayor and City Clerk to sign and fully execute all necessary documents.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions regarding either of those, items three or four?
Who, who would we ask a question of?
Uh, Mr. Anderson that just walked in and is kneeling behind you.
No.
Well, I'm sure that would be on number four. Number three would be Ms. Weeden.
This would be number four. Noel? Excuse me. But one of the things I noted in there, there was a reference to, um, displacement of, uh, the current tenants. There's no plan in this change to displace the current tenants?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director. I don't believe so. Um, they are, I think they believe everyone that was in there before will still be eligible. Obviously, they have to go by, uh, Iowa Finance Authority tax credit guidelines, but I believe all the current residents are being offered the opportunity to stay in there.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? A roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole, here. Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Very good. As motions carry, I think we should probably take five and six independently. Let's take five, please. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Welker. Number five's a motion to consider and pass for the second time and ordinance amending the 2008 traffic code by amending Section 543 through streets by adding subsection 88A in parentheses. Kimball Avenue, Frontage Road stops, that's for add stop signs at northbound and southbound Kimball Avenue, Frontage Road between Burke Ridge and Rachel.
Second.
Council, do you have any questions regarding this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
It's a roll call vote. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Very good, that motion carries. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Very good. And I know that's a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Very good. That motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Very good, the motion carries. Item six?
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Mr. Morrison?
I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second time and ordinance establishing fiscal year 2015 sidewalk repair assessment program, Zone Four, Contract Number 864.
Second.
Okay, did we miss?
Establishing grades in the city of Waterloo in conjunction with the fiscal year 2015 sidewalk repair assessment program, Zone Four, Contract Number 864.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Council, have any questions regarding this item? Uh, it's a roll call vote, please.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Madam Clerk?
Well, we need a second. Second.
I'm sorry. There's a motion and a second now. That's a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the third time and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. And also, as a roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Lynn?
Yes.
Mr. Morrison?
Yes.
Mr. Welker?
Yes.
Mr. Hart?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
The motion carries. I'm sure at some point, we're all going to get used to concentrating and looking at these screens at the same time. It's not becoming very natural to me, though. So, for those of you out there that we've mentioned it before, if you see us watching these things, we're struggling just a little bit with the paper versus the electronic version. Ladies and gentlemen, that's the end of our regularly scheduled business tonight. Very short meeting tonight, but thank you for coming. It is time for oral presentations. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak with Mayor and Counsel, now's the time to do so, please.
Jim Chapman, two-two-four Birch, I got a question on the footing drains. I don't know if it's been addressed or not. I see we got four thousand homes out there that are going to be... Need some kind of work, too. And are we going to show an instant savings at our water treatment plant right off the bat when they're done? And if so, what are we going to do with the funds that come from that?
I don't know that we're going to show any savings at all. Larry or Craig, if you guys can talk to us about that, maybe give us an idea.
Larry Smith, Super Ten of Waste Management Services. We will see some savings. We won't see a great deal of savings with four thousand homes. I think what you'll see is you'll see less flooding in basements, less SSOs in the streets. I think that's where we're aiming at.
Okay. I just wondered if there was a savings, what you plan on doing with the money, so...
There will be a savings. We're not going to really see a, you know, a great amount of savings right off the bat.
Okay.